Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for November the 15th. We, I think we might have Vice Mayor Luna on the telephone. Are you there, David?
Yes, I am there.
Okay, welcome. The first item on our agenda today is to go through the agenda for the November 19th Council Meeting upstairs, so Council, if you could please refer to that document. As always, the first several items are liquor license applications, and we do have a bingo application, good to see. Item five, various purchase contracts. Item six is various resolutions. Seven is setting public hearings for ordinances.
Mayor?
Yes.
On item 7B, which is rezoning at Alma School in Southern, it's on the agenda here as a continuance to March the 4th. In further discussion with applicant, they would prefer that continuance to be to February the 4th. So if that could be, we'll be adjusting the agenda, but want to go ahead and let the Council know when you see how many to be for February 4th.
Okay, so this will be on the consent agenda to continue until the February 4th meeting, correct? Okay. All right. Well, that's good to see that we're making progress. That's a very significant zoning case, so good to see it's still moving forward. Item eight is to receive public comment and take action on an ordinance. As is nine items currently not on the consent agenda are a taking a public hearing on the South Crisman Road baseline road rezoning case. Is that off the consent agenda because it has to be a public hearing because it's an annexation?
No, Mayor, this is because Councilmember Thompson asked it to be off.
Oh, okay. This is the matter we continued from?
Right.
Okay. Assisted living case and the applicant, I know he was talking to the applicant, so we'll see how that progressed. Council, any questions or concerns about anything on the agenda for Monday's meeting? All right, hearing done, the next item on our agenda for this meeting, item 2A, is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the housing and community development fiscal year 2019-20 funding application process. Good to have Ruth Giesi with us.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Community Services Director. I have with me as well Dennis Newbern, our Community Development Manager. It's that time again, we are coming to council to give you our proposed timeline for our federal funding process, and, sorry, how do I go back? We have, we have based our estimates on funding, based on this year's funding, which is about $5.375 million. That comprises funding of several programs within the CDBG home and ESG programs, and we will be starting the process by soliciting applications again from our agencies and other organizations, as well as city departments that seek funding to use in order to serve our community. First, we'll be notifying the applicants of the process, and we believe we'll have a chance for the Housing and Community Development Board to review the applicant's applications, and then we will be going to the CCD Board and have them an opportunity to review all the applications as well. Today, we do want to hear from Mayor and Council on what you would like the department to focus on with priorities in the coming year. In the past, we have paid special attention to making sure that we leverage our federal funding with other sources of income so that we can best utilize the funds that we receive. In addition, we are always looking for projects that are able to be completed within a timely manner so that we can make sure we're spending our funding as appropriated by, by the federal So the application process opens a little bit early for both our Lytec and home programs, and then we are planning to open up the application process for the other programs on December 10th.
I'm sorry, Ruth, can you, you mentioned Lytec, and
Yes.
Obviously, we've had, that's been a somewhat controversial topic in recent years because of some neighborhood concerns, but at the same time, I think everyone in the community appreciates and wants affordable housing, it's just some people disagree on where the most strategic location for it is. Do we make Lytec funding decisions during this process? I've always thought of them as a separate process, you know, different from our allocate, the scrutiny that we go through where human service agencies come in and make their pitch, and we, you know, score them and dish out the money accordingly. But is Lytec also involved in this process?
Dennis, can we talk to that?
Mayor, Councilmembers, the Lytec process is a separate activity, so with respect to your question, no. The Lytec process, and the calendar that's indicated here, will actually come before you sometime in February if there are in fact any applications for consideration. So just to make a point that the CDBG home and ESG and human services are totally separate from Lytec.
But, Mayor, Dennis, I mean, oftentimes, though, the applicants for Lytec are also seeking funding from, is it home dollars?
Home, that is correct.
So they're sometime, while they're separate process, they also depend upon, or will be requesting those home dollars as part of this process?
In most cases, that's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, it's separate, but they somehow get blended oftentimes, I guess, so.
Yeah, we allocate home dollars, which might be part of the package for a Lytec project to go forward.
That is correct.
And I know part of your reason for being here is to solicit input response from the Council, and I would think that, I would like to see us be proactive in going out and encouraging affordable housing projects in parts of Mesa that the community agrees, you know, that less controversial parts of Mesa where there is not current, we don't have a history of Lytec projects, but we can clearly identify the need for them. And for whatever reason, because they weren't close to light rail, or for other reasons, they've never been prime territory for Lytec projects, I think we, as a staff and as a community and human service agencies, might need to be proactive in going out and saying, there's a huge need for, we have a lot of substandard housing in this part of Mesa, we need to upgrade that housing, so let's be assertive and go out and find some developers to do that. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor, for leading on that. Councilmember Horeti and I had an update yesterday, and we talked about there's a potential applicant for a Lytec project, and I believe it was more east, way east Mesa, so maybe in District 6, but if an application comes through, I mean, there's one being considered in that area.
Good to hear.
Apparently, that's the only one that's on the desk right now, potentially. I guess it's okay to say that, but regardless, I echo your comments too, is we need to spread that out throughout the community if possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman, Mayor Giles. As we get calls sometimes from potential developers looking for different projects, we do make sure to encourage the fact that our council has said that we, we need to look at housing options all over the city, and I think even a couple times, we've gone out with them and showed them some potential areas, so we try and encourage that all the time. So thank you, and we will continue to do that.
Mayor, Council, I'd also suggest, though, it's, I think we have to be cautious too, as well, I think that's, we putting other parties makes sense, but you also need to make sure you have the supportive services for those individuals, because otherwise, if you're just putting them far out, isolated, and they don't have those other services, then it does have a propensity to create other problems in that community, because if they don't have the other employment, daycare, or other services, it can become problematic also. So we kind of, it's a balance of trying, and maybe that goes to the applicant, right, is to demonstrate that it's not just, I can build housing, but how do I provide those other wraparound services for the full, for the idea here, right, is not just to build a permanent location for some of these individuals and families, but it's the transition and helping them to become productive in society so they can become self-sustaining at some point in the future.
On this note, has there been any interest for a mixed kind of market rate slash workforce housing in parts of Mesa as far as developers or folks that we're working with, or you're all working with, to create those types of projects? Not entirely affordable housing, but a mix of market rate slash workforce, potentially maybe for first responders, or teachers, or folks that are, you know, maybe can't, you know, are earning a little bit more, but can't afford the rising rents potentially, so.
Mayor, Council Horeti, as we spoke about this yesterday, one of the things that, at least from Liz's perspective and Ruth's also, is that that we try to effectively market the opportunities that you've talked about, and I think that with respect to affordable housing, the idea of affordable housing that involves mixed housing, like you spoke about, market rate as well as assisted housing is something that would be very greatly appreciated and very greatly needed in the community, so our aim this year is to do exactly what you asked for both yesterday and today, and thank you for your question.
Thank you.
And I guess one question, I think just, so we're all eyes wide open, I'm assuming that Mesa Royal, have they been in conversations, are they going to be pursuing a Lytec application this year? Yeah, so we all, I don't think we've seen it yet, but we've been in discussions.
At some point, time is going to come.
So that's obviously not east Mesa, but it is certainly a, and that, but that is, does have some mixed
That is a very good example.
To the Councilman's point, it has a little bit of a mix of market and
Absolutely.
Lytec in there, so that's maybe an example to show.
And we, and Mayor and Council, we do have a deadline of late in December for all projects to be submitted, so we still have a little bit of time for that.
Great. I'm sorry, I think I interrupted you in the middle of your presentation.
Well, no, we were towards the end, we were about to ask you, Mayor and Council, if you would like any, anything to, for us to focus in this coming process, and we are about to get ready to prepare our presentation to anyone that's interested for the application process, so I open it up for questions or input.
Great, thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Well, thank you for asking, Ruth, I do. In our discussion yesterday, I thought about some of the travels I've been on in, throughout the United States, and seeing some of the innovation technology districts that have been built in certain cities, and I've been impressed by them. One of the things I liked is our, my colleagues to, about some feedback and ideas, there's a building just north of here, it's called the Mesa Armory, National Guard Armory, and I look at that being vacant now today, and I know it's going to take years to, maybe a year or two or so, but just research that and see if that could be into a innovation tech center, co-shared workspace, you know, driven through partnerships with higher education opportunities that are happening, hopefully that synergism within our, this downtown area can extend to some of the outside areas, and it's not far from here, it's just three blocks from here. But the building's historic, it was probably built during World War II or before, so it has a lot of fond memories for many of us that have lived in Mesa, but it could be purchased, renovated, and, and find a new purpose for it. So as I went to the Brooklyn Navy Yard a couple years ago and saw all the development there, there was a lot of innovation, technology, and businesses there in those buildings, so maybe this could be something, if my colleagues agree, is to look in, into that and see if there's any purpose in that, and if it can work out for the community as well as the city.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Luna?
I just wanted, I did speak with Dennis and Ruth a few days ago. I didn't want, I want to reiterate that in the Jefferson Park area over by Jefferson School, there is a need to create some kind of activity, they've, they've said that if we could do some type of splash pads for the community there, I think that's something we need to look at, and of course, in my area, pickleballs is something that is of high interest, and certainly that's something we can look at, and, and I also echo that when we look at Lytec, we do really need to look at East Mesa, especially around in those areas, simply because there certainly is a need for that kind of building structures to accommodate the needs in that area as well.
Thank you. Let me echo what the comments you've heard previously, I think this, you're hearing this idea of Lytec come up, not just waiting to see what shows up, but being proactive and going out and saying the city of Mesa would respond favorably to a Lytec proposal in, in parts of Mesa where we have substandard housing, and we would like that proposal to come from a provider that can do it in a good way with the wraparound services, similar to some of the great projects that we've seen in downtown Mesa. I think that would, I'd be proud to be a part of that. And I appreciate Mr. Freeman's comments about the armory. I think a couple of years ago, a real estate developer came to us and said, hey, that's a very strategic piece of property, it's close to downtown, close to all of the amenities of light rail, the, it's totally been abandoned by the National Guard, well, they're just absolutely not utilizing it for many years, that he was under the impression that the National Guard, there was one National Guard would be receptive to a land swap proposal from the city if we had a piece of property, and I believe we do, that might be more strategic for them, then we'd have a very historic, very full of character piece of property that's in a strategic location, so I'm not sure that that has a lot to do with how we allocate our federal HUD money, but still, I think it's an interesting idea. The input I would provide for what, how we ought to prioritize is I think that, I appreciate the fact that the federal government has entrusted us with over $5 million to disperse to the most vulnerable populations in our community, and I think we, that's, that's great, it's a lot less than we could spend, so we have to prioritize, and I think we need to look at the most vulnerable parts of our population, being children and homeless, and look for, this money has to be leveraged with partners, that this, it needs to be multiplied, so it can't just be standalone dollars that go get spent, and we get $100,000 worth of services for $100,000, it's got to be, we give it to someone, and it multiplies because we're working with a partner that, that can take that money and, and use it with philanthropy and other sources to have a multiplying effect, so I would like to see us, a partnership be a priority, to see how this money can grow, and to target it for those that are most vulnerable. Children, homeless, partnerships with school districts, partnerships with those who, nonprofits that we can get the biggest bang for the buck back for.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Mayor, to your point, yesterday, I got the opportunity to sit down with Mason United Way, and, and quite a few people around the table from our different nonprofits, and one of the things that came up was that there's been a discussion with the owners of Buckhorn Baths to take some of the casitas that are there now and potentially have a community come together, fix those up, and turn those into, on a temporary basis at least, into supportive housing for homeless families or homeless mothers with children. And so if there's an opportunity to take some of these funds, to your point, where they could be multiplied with our nonprofits, and, I mean, that would be, to me, that's a perfect opportunity to take something that isn't being used, fix it up so it's no longer nice or on our community, and then utilize it to help those that are vulnerable.
Is that useful feedback to you?
Yes, it's wonderful feedback, thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to let you know that Councilmember Horeti had asked a very good question yesterday when I provided an update, and he just wanted a basic snapshot of where we were in last year's funding, what, where we, we spent our funds, or utilized our funds, and so I just gave you a quick snapshot this morning, I dropped it off at each of your areas, and I will provide that by email as well, and, and that's just to kind of give you a framework as we're moving into this next funding cycle. And so today, we are asking you to approve our proposed funding in human services timely.
I have a question.
Thank you.
On the issue, another item, issue of homeownership, where are we at as far as the CHODO, or the Community Housing Development Organization, as far as landing one here Mesa? Do we have one? I would like to see move on, move into homeownership opportunities, folks, I was at an event last night, awarding some of the, the folks that have been in our affordable housing program, and they graduated into, you know, this, this woman got a job, she was in the program, and now has a house here in Mesa on Gilbert, which is something that we want to see, you know, folks grow into, but how are we doing as far as homeownership opportunities? I know we use the home funds, but is there other opportunities that we can do for people to get ownership of, you know, of housing here in Mesa?
Mayor, Councilman Horeti, you asked two questions, so I'll answer both of them. The first one is that CPLC has been recently designated as a CHODO, so a Community Housing Development Organization. With respect to homeownership, part of our charge and part of this whole discussion is everything to do with trying to find new and innovative ways to create homeownership, homeownership opportunities personally for persons of low or moderate income. In doing that, as the mayor spoke about, it requires partnering with a lot of people. $5 million for programs that we have, are not only for housing, but for other services too, you mentioned wraparound services as an example, but to do the type of housing that would result in homeownership opportunities requires a great deal more partnerships, and CPLC, we hope, will be an example of an organization that, actually a nationally-known organization that we'll be working with to produce new housing units, and I suspect there'll be others that'll come along too.
That's great, yes, Mr. Thompson?
And I agree with Councilmember Horeti, that's something that, you know, that the past council has pushed, I've been pushing, I'm glad Councilmember Horeti is on board, because I really would love to see us move towards homeownership, because I think, you know, once you graduate from, from the program where you're becoming sustainable, if we can get people into, into owning their own home, then they become part of our community, and they take pride in our neighborhoods, and then we can eliminate a lot of the blight and a lot of the other things that we spend so much money and effort and energy on trying to clean up, simply by people taking ownership and pride in their neighborhood and, and the fact that they are now homeowners.
Mayor, Councilman Thompson, I think that with the, the idea of a continuum of care that we offer, addressing the fact of people that are currently without a place to stay, ultimately being in the situation to be in a home, is exactly what we try to do, and so with respect to the activities that we undertake, everything that you've said is, is what we do, and to try to increase the availability of homeownership opportunities, to try to partner with organizations like CPLC, like other organizations that we're actively working with too, ultimately gets us to that point. So we're in total agreement with that, and that's what Liz has instructed us to do, and that's what we do.
So Mayor and Council, and Dennis and Ruth can help me with this, but one of the areas that I would, maybe Council could help at least articulate, make sure you're, we're all on board with this, one of the challenges we have with our homeless population is the number of beds that are available in our community to support that. So one of the things, and part of this conversation here is not just to give staff direction, but it's also to send a signal, I guess, to our nonprofits about what we're looking for, and I think that's one of the critical needs, not just in Mesa, but across the region. So I think that if, I mean, I'm assuming that based on Mayor, your comments, but to be specific, that's an area that certainly helps us as we go out and engage with our homeless population in Mesa, it's always very helpful as we do, so with our navigators and other community partners, that we can actually offer, create, or have an opportunity, or at least suggest an opportunity where they might be able to have a get a bed or a housing, and so if that's okay, I think we want to make sure we're sending that message to our nonprofits very clear, that we're looking for someone who can provide for that opportunity somewhere in our community.
Right. Okay, this conversation just got really interesting.
Oh.
Well, it wasn't interesting before?
No. Okay. It was, it was very interesting, but here's, Mr. Brady, your comments are spot on, but here's, here's the rub, I think everybody in this room, and when I talk to Mark Young, and everyone who's working so diligently, air and rain, on the homelessness situation, when we go to the continuum of care meetings at MAG, and we work with our regional partners on this, everyone agrees that we need additional beds, that all of our outreach and all of the, the great work that we're doing with our community courts, and our police, and the human service agencies are great, but we hit a brick wall because we don't have a place for people to go, some transitional housing. And so we all agree on that, what we will have difficulty getting agreement on is people saying, yeah, I'd love to have that in my neighborhood. So yes, we need to send that message, I'm, I'm sending that message, that I would like us to, to acknowledge the reality of that situation, but we all have to go into this, as you say, with our eyes open, understanding that, that there's going to be pushback, because everyone wants that facility, but they don't want it in their neighborhood.
Right, and Mayor, I think there's, and you're right, but I think that has to go to scale and density of how you try to address that in one area, and I think sometimes we can overwhelm a particular part of a community if we create too much, for lack of words, just too much concentration of that, and if we don't have, again, going back to my big theme is, you've got to have the supportive services there also, but at least we have to keep trying and figure out where that might fit, and maybe it's not just designating one part of our community, but it's trying to come up with a strategy that allows it to be provided throughout our community, because certainly the poor will always be among us, and even the homeless, and so we've got to figure out a way to address it across our community. But at least we want, what we're looking for is partners to come up with these solutions, and that's really our message today, is listening, is, with using the council's kind of direction here, it sends a message, and we hope to deliver to our nonprofits, is this is what we're looking for, because there's a lot of other great ideas out there in the community that nonprofits have, but sometimes we kind of have to say, it's a really great idea, but right now, we're focused on this particular issue in our community.
This seems to be, though, a sticking point, I mean, we can only, we can progress only so far until we address the, the reality of not having beds. And so it would, maybe we might have to think innovatively, there are certainly some faith-based groups, for example, that pick up folks at cause, and they take them to different congregations, you know, for a time, maybe the beds are on a rotating basis, and we
Sure.
Have them dispersed around town, and so one neighborhood doesn't bear the brunt of all of that. I don't know if that's a good idea, but we need to explore how we're going to do this without infuriating one section of our town.
Absolutely, and that's a balance, and so, yeah, I think we can say, say that we're going to look for those opportunities, and those groups, nonprofits that come in with those ideas will give them higher consideration. I think that's what they need to hear too, is there's some motivation or incentive for them to go out and do that.
Chris, I did also want to add that the types of beds that we're, we're primarily looking for is that bridge housing, so it's temporary bridge housing so that we can get them into permanent housing.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
You know, and I think from, Chris, from your perspective, I think the city has to be willing to bend as well, and I know in our discussion yesterday with United Way, some of the things that were thrown out, for example, tiny homes doesn't even fit within our, our code, so we really should start looking at our compliance, or not our compliance side, our, our code side to, our P&amp;Z side to see, because there may be opportunities where there's vacant land that an owner has that's just sitting on it, that they may be willing to temporarily allow tiny homes to be on there until they sell their property, and, and, you know, and tiny homes as a temporary fill to get somebody off the street would be a perfect ideal situation, but our codes don't allow for them, so, you know, that's something that we should look at as well, and be flexible and be willing to bend and to accommodate the nonprofits when they do have good ideas.
No, I agree, I think that we need to do that, that's, that's fair.
Mr. Freeman?
Ruth, how are we doing on the navigator's side for the community and the nonprofits? Are we, are we adequate with navigators?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we always need more, of course, especially with Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we always need more, of course, especially with our light rail extension, and we're going to have more folks coming here, more folks using. We want navigators, what they really help us with is they help our law enforcement and our Valley Metro security to help with, if they find somebody on light rail, that's not our area, but as a navigator, we can assist with potential funding to help them get some housing and bridge services. So we, we're always trying to build stronger relationships with both our Valley Metro folks and PD to help offset how we can help. And that's how we can balance CDBG funding with that. So we're, but we are, we'll see, you know, we always hear that we could use more, so we'll see what we, the pack, you know, the applications that come and we'll, we'll work with them as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Luna, anything you'd like to add to this?
No, I appreciate Ruth and Dennis and all their hard work. Certainly you've indicated to them what our needs are. It's obviously that we need to work with some of our nonprofits to provide those wraparound services. You know, certainly, I know Councilmember Thompson and I are very interested in doing something in East Mesa, and perhaps him and I can work together, identify a nonprofit so that we can target some of the homeless that we have in our area, so. But, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your great work. We appreciate it. Look forward to working with you. So I'm sorry, we need a motion on approving the timeline. Am I correct?
I believe it's a motion.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 2B. That's to hear a presentation and provide direction on guidelines and standards for residential small lot and cluster development. Looks like we brought the A-team for this?
Yes, sir, we did.
Water, please.
Wow.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. We're excited to be here today. I'm Christine Zalanco with Development Services Department. This is a very multidisciplinary discussion, so we have in fact brought the A-team, and the rest of them are in the audience. John's going to talk about this, but this is a trending residential opportunity that we've had to look at. The high-density small lot cluster development has raised a lot of issues that really impact all essential city services. So I'm going to turn it over to John. Clearly, if you have any questions or comments, we have the whole crew here to help answer specific discussions.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Yes, I'm going to drive and do the primary discussions. We go through the slides, but at any time you feel a need to ask a question, need information, more detail than I'm giving, that's why we have the other experts here to jump in and help out with this discussion. And we've been talking about it for several months and getting to this point to be able to, what we hope clearly identify what the different issues and challenges are that we need to address. So on these slides today, first, we're going to go just a little background that we feel like we've seen in terms of that development pattern over the last few years that have gotten us to where we are with these smaller lots, cluster development. The challenges that we've seen with those, we'll, we'll mention what all of them are, then go through each one in detail, and then some next steps about where we think we can go from here. So in terms of some background, our zoning ordinance provides for everything from 90,000 square foot lots down to 2,500 square foot lots, where that's half a unit per acre to 17 units per net acre. So there's quite a range in there that we have in terms of lot sizes that are available. Over the last few years, we've seen more and more of a trend to go into the smaller lots. And so as we get to the smaller lots, then we've also gotten to narrower streets and shorter driveways and some other things. So just a couple of examples we pulled out back in 2005, a plat that was approved fairly typical for the era, 8,500 square foot lots, 70-foot wide, full-depth driveway, standard streets, life was good. But then we started seeing some of those start to shrink up. So this development from 2012, 5,500 square foot lot with a 47-foot wide lot, and then shallower driveway, standard street width still. And then 2014, 3,000 square foot lot, 40-foot wide, no driveways to speak of and access to most of the units by way of a service drive instead of actually frontage on the street. Over the last six years, we've seen about a third of our development be these smaller lot cluster developments as this trend has continued to grow. So as we have been working with these over these last years, we've started to notice several daily challenges that come up, from the solid waste, emergency access, parking, pedestrians, utilities, and ultimate HOA responsibility for maintenance of some of these issues that we think can be a challenge. So going through each one of these then in a little bit more detail, starting with the solid waste. We see issues with the storage and placement of the barrels, where they are along the street, how we can access those barrels as the solid waste vehicles come up and the conflicts that get created with the vehicles that are parked along the street. We see instances of barrels being pulled out to the street and left there. You can see by the different colored barrels out there on the street and kind of set back, people didn't, don't take the barrels back at the end of day. And you can see in that picture in the upper right-hand corner, barrels back by the house and get a sense of some of the distance then that those barrels get pulled, maybe why people don't want to go back and get them, because it's a distance to get them to and from their house. So those have become some of the issues that we face with regards to solid waste. Also have concerns for some of the public safety issues. When we look at these cluster developments and access by one route into these, a person gets in there, it's easy to get a person trapped in there. And when front doors aren't readily visible, and there are little places where people hide along those corridors, there's concern for those entrapments. And so the type of lighting we have and where it's at, landscaping that gets placed and providing security of any property, if you've parked your car out on the street and you can't really see that car or maybe messing with the car, becomes a challenge for fire medical when they go in there if they're needing to access that last house down the private access drive. That can be a challenge for them to get in or get out, depending upon what's happened with vehicles parked there, what might be going on in the street. Again, finding the right door that they need to get to becomes a challenge. And then getting back out also. Parking, we've had some discussion before about parking as we get some of the shallower driveways, narrower lots, where do guests park? They can't park in the driveway, there isn't one. The lot's too narrow to park in front of the individual lot, so we need to start providing guest parking. But how much and where, and what's the safety and security of that? How do people get from those parking spaces to the home they're wanting to get to? And again, as we see the cars parked along the street, the access for the solid waste vehicles. Picture on the bottom in this slide, you see a lot of signs along the right side there for the, where you can and can't park. And this is on average weekday, this isn't on some specialty day when this many cars are parked along the street. And we have a problem with enforcement of people parking where they're supposed to and not parking where they're not supposed to, and it even gets confusing sometimes because there's so many signs. Where does the no parking really begin and where does it really end? Pedestrian access, getting to a home, a lot of these because of the narrow lots and narrow streets, don't provide sidewalks along the street. So anybody moving from house to lot or parked car to a home has to walk down the street. And that bottom picture, if you were using the sidewalk to get into this development, once you went through that gate, how do you get then to the front door of any individual home? You're going to have to be walking down the street because there are no sidewalks or safe areas to walk. Also seeing some challenges with the amenity areas and where they get placed and how visible they are and how easy they are to find and get pedestrians to and from them in a safe and easy manner. Utilities and the placement of those, the water and the sewer lines in particular in these cluster developments, the water meters get placed out along the street with service lines going from there to the units. So you have the clustering of meters and pedestals out along the street, which isn't always attractive. If you're in the rear home and your water line gets a leak, that leak is up in front of the first home, whose responsibility is it? How do you work in that situation to get the services done? How do you do that without blocking access to all the homes along the service line or along that access drive? Similar then also for the sewer lines in terms of where they get placed and how they can get maintained in the long run.
I'm sorry, John, can I interrupt you?
You may.
The photos that you've shown us, the last several slides, are these all homes that currently are within our development guidelines that were built in Mesa and they meet all of our codes? Or are these examples from other communities that highlight potential problems that we want to try to avoid?
Mayor, these are all from the city of Mesa and things that we have, we've been trying to develop the different policies, different standards and codes as we've seen more and more of these. And so these do meet our most current standards, but we're not sure our current standards and guidelines are really meeting the needs long-term for these developments and for the city.
We're seeing some consequences to the decisions of trying to be, work with, be flexible, but now we're realizing it does present, you know, in our flexibility to help out, it's now created, I don't know, unintended consequences, but certainly consequences to this. And I think for us as the city, we often look at this as not what is expeditious for that development right now to get it sold and get somebody in the home, but our concern is the long-term. And that's the perspective, sometimes the difference between a developer and the city, is that we're saying, you know, they're looking at how to get this up and marketed and sold and so they can get out of the property. And we're looking at how do we continue to maintain this property over the next 30, 40, 50 years? And I think we're starting, it's becoming more obvious to us, maybe some of the challenges as the densities continue to want to even go higher than what we're even showing you here. And so some of the challenges are being manifest in these particular categories.
Which is a great segue.
Mr. Freeman.
Use your segue. I'll give you that.
Segue into this last slide, last section, that's the HOA responsibilities in terms of how the responsibilities they have, because most of these things are private streets, private amenities, and are they properly funded to maintain or are they not going to be able to? And again, that kicks these things back to the city when they can't do it and then want the city to come in and maintain their street, maintain their driveways, maintain their amenity areas.
Well, with that said, I, I'm sure you're all here because you foresee a problem in delivering services in our community. And I, I know that in my district, I, we have applicants and developers doing this and want to do more of it. And I'd be flat honest, I'm not a fan of it. I think it's just cumbersome for the way, just the whole development, where people live, the clusters, you know, we got, what, five units and then a space and then three units and, and, you know, you can take a small parcel and put, you know, 120, 130 units on there with no, zero driveways, sidewalks maybe, and then the parking. It compounds everything you discussed. And I would support some change, whatever is needed, but, and I'm sure that's why you're here to discuss that as well. But I just see it cumbersome, and I look, foresee, you know, like Mr. Brady said, 20, 30, 40 years, you know, this is, this perpetuated problem that we've compounded within our community. And so I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues on this and see where we end up with it.
Mr. Thompson.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Luna and then Mr. Thompson.
You know, I agree with my colleague Freeman. The issue that I've had is the whole parking. You know, they build a development, they don't anticipate the parking, and then it's a fight between the HOA and then they, they don't get satisfied and they come to the city of Mesa to try to resolve it. And certainly we want to make sure public safety can access the homes in case there should be some kind of fire or, you know, police. The problem is the parking. And so we're going to need to really address how these developments look at parking. I know they're trying to make money, but at the same time, we want to make sure we're satisfying the needs that the members are living there. I've got two communities, there's always this ongoing issue related to parking on the street and not having enough room to park. So, Mr. Wesley, it's important, let's, let's come up with some kind of plan that we can address this issue because it's going to be ongoing. As you said, 30 years, four years from now, it's not going to resolve itself. We've got to resolve it now.
And I guess my, you know, I, I struggle with this because we see a lot of this in my district, specifically like Eastmark Cadence and some of the other areas. And I struggle with density, but at the same time, I look at it as the market's dictating what the developers are doing or they wouldn't be doing it. And so there's a need out there, there's a want for this type of product from the, from the community. You know, I don't necessarily buy everything you're selling, you know, whether it's sidewalks, not having sidewalks, because it's not, it's not like it's an arterial street. So it's not like you're walking down, you know, Alma School or something of that nature to walk to your house. And when you start looking at utilities and so forth, I mean, the difference, there's not that much of a difference between having a water main break, you know, in your, in your roadway versus having one in Rio Salado like we did last night. It's an inconvenience for everyone, but it's a necessity if, if there's a break. You know, parking is always a struggle when you get into six-packs, hammerheads, or higher density type things. The thing that really concerns me is the, is the pull distances on the solid waste, you know, because I was even talking to Mike Comstock yesterday, and we were out looking at some housing out in Chandler. And, and I said, you know, it was, it's kind of funny that, you know, when you were in solid, back when you were in solid waste, the pull lengths were 90 feet. And I said, guess how much, how far they are now? And he's like, what? And I said, 100 feet. And he was like, wow. And that short of a, of a timeframe, it expanded another 10 feet. And I said, and guess what they're pushing for now? 105 feet. And, you know, and for me, you know, we need to, we need to come up, and I guess this all goes back to the idea that I had of doing that menu of items, you know? And I continue to go back to that because it was something I brought up four years ago. We started it, it hasn't been done. But you have to give developers an opportunity to build the product that they want, and if they can't meet our guidelines, then let's give them some other things that they have to do to resolve their issues. And if it's parking, then let's stick to, you know, that they have to have so much parking per, per home. Or if it's pull distances, let's stick to, you know, an option for, that they have to meet. So, you know, it's not a one size is going to fit all as time changes and goes by. And if we, if we don't want to continue to have this conversation about changing our ordinances and changing our codes to fit the latest and greatest that the community, that the developers are bringing to the market, then we're going to have to come up with a menu of items that will help the developers know what they're up against if they come into Mesa to build. And I'll continue to push that because I think it's important for the development community. It gives them a sense of, of comfort, I guess, knowing that if they come to Mesa and they build this product, that we're going to accommodate them, but here's the whole list of things they're going to have to do to get that accommodation. And so, you know, ultimately, I think the market's going to dictate it, but I do want us to push back some. I think, I think, you know, our, our services deserve that, you know, especially solid waste and those guys, you know, we don't want a solid waste vehicle sitting out in the middle of the street running while the driver's hauling trashcans 105 feet, you know, down the roadway. And I, and I think we would all agree on that, so, thank you.
Okay. Maybe, hopefully we'll get Mr. Luna back. I'm sorry, but please continue.
Whitaker.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Whitaker.
As far as these smaller lot sizes go, have we done any studies on the correlation of the future of the home value prices and what effect condensing the housing has from that aspect?
Mayor, Board, or Councilmember Whitaker, I've been in P&amp;Z Board too many times here. I'm on boards. Councilmember Whitaker, no, we haven't looked at that yet. For Mesa, most of these are still relatively new, that we really don't have a long enough history to see how that's affecting the value. Some other communities have had them longer. We might be able to do some comparisons there.
It's a good question that often comes up. One of the things that we can say, and we've looked at is, and this kind of goes to the HOAs, we kind of looked at what HOAs are sustainable and have been around for a long time and are actively, still active today, because that's the challenge, right? If we give some of these exceptions, like on pull distances or whatever, oftentimes the developers' resolution is, oh, the HOA will take care of that. They'll be responsible for enforcing the parking. Or instead of doing barrels and pull distances, they'll maintain dumpsters, you know, at the site. And they'll even have someone go and pick up the bags at everybody's front door and then take it to the dumpster. The HOA's responsibility for maintaining the, the amenities, the landscaping. And the challenge is, is that that sounds great while the developer's still the majority property owner, but once it gets turned over to the individual property owners, that's, that's not always very successful. And I, I know that some of the councilmembers, you've had those challenges where you have HOAs that are not performing to the expectations of, of the residents. And so that's a hard for us to assess at the beginning whether or not an HOA is going to be successful. And I think where HOAs are successful, they are able to help able to help maintain values in the community. And our best, well, my best example, and I was asked best example, but I was thinking about even the Sunland Village East HOAs. I mean, they do a great job. But, you know, what made them different, they, they were open to know that they were going to be able to continue today versus someone that's just coming about, being organized now. It's, it's, it's hard to make that distinction, but maybe it's something we need to work on. But that's our other dilemma, right, is that developers will often defer or suggest the HOA will be responsible for maintaining the quality inside these developments. But that's, that's, that's very, there's a lot of risk in that, just because we don't really get to manage and control those HOAs in the long term. So.
I have a question on the HOA funding as well. Do we have the ability from a legal perspective or any way to like do an ordinance in which we can require HOAs to maintain certain reserve balance for future capital expenditures, right? Because unlike the city, we don't have the ability in our HOA to issue bonds. I'll give you an example, in my community, it costs about a quarter million dollars to replace the streets. But if the board isn't putting away money in the reserves to prepare for those, then they get hit with this giant assessment down the road. To prepare for that from the city's perspective, do we have the ability to force any regulations down onto the HOAs to require like a ratio of reserve balance to what the anticipated future costs are for that community?
Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, I'd have to look at it. The problem is, is the, and we can look at it and we can see if it's a possibility. The question oftentimes comes down to is whether or not the state legislature has preempted the field and whether or not they have sort of taken up that area of law and decided that municipalities can't regulate. And so there are obviously a significant number of HOA state statutes, whether or not they've fully preempted the field to prevent municipalities regulating, I'm not sure. And so I'd have to look at it. The other is actually enforcement, too. We'd have to look at how are we going to enforce that, that funding mechanism also as far as on the HOA. We can also look at, on certain aspects, doing development agreements and looking at, at least on some of the, on the, maybe the solid waste aspects, doing a development agreement with these HOAs. So we have a contractual enforcement mechanism, too.
Okay, great. Yeah, again, my greater concern is over the future, as these communities don't have the reserves to do things like replace the streets and these communities go down in value, that's only going to have an adverse effect on decreasing the median sales price across our entire city, right, as we have these pockets of unfunded HOAs. And I'll agree with my colleagues here, on the developer side of things, I think the developers are always going to push for the most condensed, smallest driveway. I mean, we just had an issue last month where you say like, let's shrink the sizes of the garages at this point, right? So in a sales market, they're always going to keep pushing for more and more condensed housing for that return on investment. So I'll agree with everyone here that I think that it's our responsibility to look at the future median value of our houses and make sure that we're protecting that. Because ultimately, I think that's going to be the deciding where the future of our city goes, right? If we have housing values that are collapsing because we didn't think this through, I think that's going to have a detrimental effect on the entire city. So I fully support whatever you guys need to do to make sure that we're not falling into this trap. Thank you, guys.
Mayor, Council, then our last slide, this picks up again very well from there. So we have been looking at this and started to generate some preliminary ideas of how we can address the issues with a combination of some guidelines, some policies, some potential code changes. To Mr. Thompson's comment, a matrix that as lots get narrower, streets get narrower, here's the increasing requirements that would go with that. So a developer would understand what they have to do as they're making those choices and the trade-offs. So based on the Council's comments today, we will go back and see where we are on those. Can make any final refinements if we think are necessary. Then we're going to go out to the development community to show them where we're going with this, get their comments and feedback. There, we can finalize those recommendations. We'll come back through the planning zoning board and ultimately back to Council then with some recommendations for those policies and for any text amendments that would be necessary to help implement the needs.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman, before you leave.
Question. I see Chief Rankin in the back and, public first responders, when we respond, addresses, how are the addresses posted on these buildings? Because, you know, that's critical in, from police response as far as fire response and how we can manage that. Because are those addresses very visible? Is that a problem at all in this process?
Chief Rankin is an expert in this, but I don't know.
No, but Christine probably is.
Yeah, Christine or John. But it's a concern, it's a concern for PD, I would think.
I mean, I think it's a, well, it's a concern across the board, I think, for transportation, for solid waste, for police, fire. Are addresses easily readily available?
I've always enjoyed trying to find people in these units because it is kind of like a treasure hunt.
So Mayor and Council, it all depends on the cluster, right? So some of them have specific unit numbers, no different than apartment complexes. So you'll see one main address out front and then now you're looking for that unit number. But I've also seen clusters where each of them have individual addresses.
Yeah.
There is a, an addressing convention through engineering when the plaits come in and the addresses are assigned. But you're exactly right, the visibility, once you get into a six pack, how is fire or police going to find that specific unit? So that, that's certainly one of the challenges that we need to look at.
Well, just having been there and done that, and I look at these zero lot lines and the driveways hardly existing and others, I just find it difficult for first responders to get to where they need to be, even though we're very good at it. And, you know, I don't worry about the solid waste guys, they always find the blue barrels and the green barrels and the black barrels. But just something I was just thinking about is during your conversation with developers, making sure addresses are extremely visible to first responders and everybody.
I think if you look at this example, this is one where the, excuse me, the, the drive here, this is actually a private drive. So theoretically, public safety, if you can see this, I'm sorry, is going to stop here and then have to figure out what that address is up here. So that's one of the things we've been struggling with. If you're on this main, we'll call it, street, how do you know exactly which address that is?
Exactly.
Yeah. So that's certainly one of the areas that we need to figure out what the right answer is.
So Mayor and Council, we'll return to you. We, we want to make sure we got the right, we're heading in the right direction. But I think John and Christine, we have the, the standards that we've, we've been looking at, so we can turn those around pretty quickly. But we are kind of swimming upstream from the pressure that's coming to make these smaller and, and to, and what's happened is John and Christine and their efforts to try to work with developers have allowed for exceptions to our rules. We have defined standards. And if everybody, and those are clear. I mean, they're in the code. And so there's no question about what is required as far as widths of streets and distances for pulls. But everyone wants to make, you know, that last unit that's now 105 feet or whatever it is, just, just five feet more or whatever. And it's like, okay, everything else complies except for the last one or two units. And so that's kind of the discussion we're stuck with is do we reject the entire development because one unit is, what are five, 10 feet out of the norm? But then, once we do it then, of course, then the next development that comes in, it's, you know, you can see what happens. And so we're trying to be accommodating and flexible. But at the same time, I think we've kind of now, we're revisiting this and saying, maybe there's some standards where we just kind of have to say, we're going to hold to it. And we just want to make sure Council knows that's the direction we're headed. And that's, maybe we'll bring that back in the schedules, the matrix or whatever we have.
Thank you. I do, I have a couple of things to say on the topic. I've have the experience, the experience of having served on council 25 years ago and gone through some difficult zoning cases and erred on the side of approving housing projects or other buildings and then had to suffer through 25 years of driving by that neighborhood or that building and realizing that I made a mistake, that we created a situation that was not sustainable and we did not do our community a favor by approving something. So I think it's good for us all to remind ourselves that we are not desperate for housing. We are not desperate for development in our community. We can have standards that acknowledge that there's a range of, of tastes in our community and we need to accommodate all that. But there are some benchmarks that we need to stick to and public safety response, solid waste functionality, not, not subjecting HOAs, you know, having insolvent, unsolvent HOAs, having, you know, not follow through on commitments that their zoning lawyers made 20 years ago. You know, that's just common sense, good government. So I think there's, there's room for a difference of opinion on what's a nice neighborhood. But, and I have my opinion and everyone has their own. But I think some of these benchmarks are things that we can't compromise on. And if we have experimented in the past and people are now coming to us saying, well, you let them do this. And so we want to do it or we want to take it a few inches more, we need to say, well, we made a mistake and we're going back and changing. And because we care more about sustainability and being able to, the, the nice young family who wants to save $50 a month on their mortgage and can go to this community instead of that community because it's slightly more affordable, that's great. But two or three sellers down the line, we're going to have a community that is, that is not something that we're proud of. So I'm just echoing, I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but, but I very much support staff looking into having a more long-term approach to this, is how are we going to ensure that, that we aren't subjecting neighborhoods to issues down the road if we approve these, these types of projects now?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions, Council? Thank you for bringing this to us. It's, it's very timely. I know that we've got cases pending now that, that need this type of feedback and we'll provide that to them.
We will continue working on it and come back to you with specific proposals on code. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Luna, are you back with us?
Yeah, they're having some problems.
Problem, okay. The next item on our agenda is item three, acknowledged receipt of various boards and minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next is schedule of future meetings and general information. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next study session, council meeting, will be Monday, November 19th. And then the following day, Tuesday, is known as Turkey, the Great Turkey Tuesday here in Mesa. So that's November 20th. So from 6:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. at the Mesa Convention Center, we'll be collecting turkeys that will be provided to the United Food Bank. So we're, our goal is 1,500 turkeys to be collected that day. So if you have a turkey that you would like to donate, you can come by and anybody can bring it by. Again, Tuesday, November 20th, from 6:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. at the Mesa Convention Center.
Live ones, okay.
Live ones?
You said bring a turkey?
Yeah, well, probably not.
Special collection area in Lehigh for live ones.
If you will prepare and dress it for the family that needs it, that would be fine, yes. And then we're also very excited, and we'll talk more about this on Monday, but just looking forward to Mary Mainstream kickoff, which will be Thursday, November, a week from today, November 23rd at 5:00 p.m. So we'll talk more about that probably on Monday, Mayor. But looking great forward to the activities and looking forward to our.
Yes, I was very excited. I pulled in my parking space today and saw the ice rink going up. That's, it's a wonderful time of year. I, I think it'd be difficult for us to adjourn this meeting without acknowledging that we just had a very significant election in our community this last week. I mean, it is still too close to call some of the elections, so no need to, to rush to congratulate folks. Maybe we'll wait a few days to do that on some of the close races. But it is clear to me that, that our, the voters of our community have given a vote of confidence to Mesa City Government and they've expressed a desire to have a community that has parks and fire stations and libraries and youth sports facilities and a community that they want to put down roots in and, and have their children come back and live in. And so it's been, I just want to express my appreciation to the voters of, of the city for expressing that support in this community and acknowledging the responsibility that this organization has to use the funds wisely that the voters have allocated to us. So I'm sure we'll, we'll talk more perhaps in a meeting or two after some of the, all of the races are, are complete. But it just seemed inappropriate to not thank the voters as quickly as possible for what I thought was a very good outcome and really appreciate the trust that the voters have given to their elected officials in this community. All right, having said that, Mr. Freeman, yes?
You know, I just want to say thanks on the Veterans Day Parade. There are a lot of people here that work, staff members, hard. And it turned out very well and a lot of the colleagues were there and appreciated that. It was a fun opportunity to be there. And also I have a community meeting tonight in our Lehigh area, so we'll be starting that at 6:30 at the Lehigh School.
Thank you. Other announcements or scheduling questions? Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.